The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please?
Alderman Ted Grady.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Eisenach.
Here.
Alderman Sevigny.
Here.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
Alderman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. The first item on this evening's agenda is a public hearing. It's to rezone 800 Plank Road from heavy industrial to general commercial. And Mr. Larson is here this evening to give us a little update on what this is all about.
Yeah, so both these parcels are zoned I-1. Could not find the history of when it was zoned I-1, but we're assuming that it's always been that way due to the current businesses not being permitted uses in the I-1 district. We had previous conversations with the property owner about future plans for the buildings and just the properties in general. And she wanted to, you know, either rezone and create a CSM to extend the lot line. But this one is for the rezoning, and the surrounding parcels are zoned C-1 except for the manufacturing company to the north. Rezoning to C-1 would better suit both the uses of the existing businesses and would also be a more acceptable district in respect to the future land use plan as stated in the comprehensive plan.
Thanks. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on the rezoning ordinance this Seeing no one, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we'll move to the reported department head, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes and the communications. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve Minutes A through G and Communications H through N.
So motion is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Item F is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak now, you could step forward. I know that there's at least one person. Oh, two people then.
Tim Jacobson.
Tim Jacobson, 732 Parrish Street. Just wanted to make sure I made this meeting. I understand it's going to be your last.
There'll be one more.
Except for this sign and die.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, I just want to congratulate you and thank you for all the efforts that you've made for Public Works throughout the years. I remember when you were a skinny little alderman, and you didn't think that we needed a city garage at the time, but you had the courage to come out and face the music out by us and to have the guys give you a tour, even though some of them wanted to do bad things to you. But it showed your acceptance and your tolerance and your courage. And by the time he left, he did admit we needed a new city garage. And it took some time, but with all your patience and efforts, we have a state-of-the-art facility now that you can be proud of. And once again, thank you for your service.
Thanks for noticing I've gained weight.
Oh, and I think I'm responsible for a couple of the gray hairs.
Yeah. Anyone else this evening? Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Bob Guerrier. I live at 1071 Brighton Drive. And I'm going to pass these out, and I think you'll be able to hear me without the mic.
But we won't record you, so we can just pass them down this way.
Thanks very much. The TV. I wanted to give you more information about plans for a Marigold Mile on Racine Street this summer. I think there's been at least an announcement about that within the council a few months ago, and I'm here to answer any questions and, as I say, give you an update. We're soliciting donations through the Marigold Mile organization, which is a 501(c)(3), so people can donate in a tax-deductible way if they choose. And very simply, by going to that website online, there's a button to click for donation, and then another button to click specifically for Manassia Marigold Mile. To date, we've had a little over $1,000 donated, and the goal is 3,000 with the intent of planting approximately 3,000 plants along the first three blocks of Racine Street between the bridge and Second Street. On the east side, it'll just be two blocks between Broad and Second because that first broad of the bridge, the space between sidewalk and curb is fairly ample and really not appropriate for this kind of planting. On the west side of the street, however, we'll do all three blocks and perhaps a little bit around the corner in an area that's open on the sidewalk in front of Club Liquor. So I wonder if anyone has any questions? And again, my hope is that you will be supportive. I'll look forward to all of you donating great amounts of cash to this effort as well as recruiting volunteers and perhaps volunteering and helping us do planting on a day during the first week of June, which is the actual date yet to be determined. Questions that I can respond to?
We don't normally do questions, but we do thank you for coming this evening, and I'm sure that everyone knows how to find you if they do have a question or I can forward it to you as well.
Very good. Thank you.
But thank you for organizing this.
Good evening. Sandra DeBelle-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. You know me, I have procedural questions tonight. In your packet is the application for a temporary Class B picnic license for the Suss Centennial Block Party. And I know the committee has been working really hard on creating events that the community can get involved in, and this will be the big event. But my question concerns basically procedural. Typically, the street use application is provided to the Board of Public Works to review to close the streets, and that's missing tonight. That has not occurred. Additionally, this would go before the Park Department Board for use of Curtis Reed Square. So, and with that is a map and the insurance certificate and the whole special event policy, and you have a sit-down and everyone discusses things. So I'm just kind of questioning if we're putting the cart before the horse here. Additionally, it sounds like, from just reading it, I don't know because it wasn't in the minutes, if this is a block party, if the alcohol will be available on the streets and sidewalks, if something has to be done regarding our ordinance because we prohibit that, and we prohibit the various establishments downtown from people exiting with carrying alcoholic beverages. So I'm just kind of wondering, just to be in line with all the other events that we have, why we're kind of jumping right to this? There is plenty of time for those other committees and boards to review prior to just approving this tonight. And I also briefly wanted to comment on the memorandum regarding the video recordings. It's unfortunate that UW will not be doing it anymore, and I don't know how long ago this was communicated to the council or if it just showed up in your packet. I missed not having so many communications in your packet, and I just kind of was questioning also. I'm glad that things were able to be arranged to work it out, but I do believe this is part of the council's budget, and if this increase in expense would have required the council to actually vote on it. So, other than that, have a good evening and good luck to everyone tomorrow. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the next page. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the minutes to approve? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the Common Council Minutes of 3:18:24.
So motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item two is a native vegetative management services contract. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to read the motion a little different than what's on the agenda. So at this time, the Board of Public Works would like us to approve an award to McMahon for a proposal and for staff to execute an agreement for native vegetation management services in the amount of $5,142, and to also add 20 additional hours staff time, if applicable, at a rate for any city as long as the city directs planned modifications.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So motion is second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Next item is the Needham Ashfire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, and if anyone has questions, the chief is here, but the Needham Ashfire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee is recommending that we have an agreement for the Urban Search and Rescue Emergency Response Services with the State of Wisconsin Department of Military Affairs Division of Emergency Management. And this would be from 7/1/24 to 6/30/26.
So motion is second by Alderman Ted Grady. Any discussion?
This is, do you have something? Okay. This is kind of a standard agreement that we've had in the past. We haven't done it, though. I believe last year we didn't have it at all. I think some of that had to do with COVID. But I'll have the chief speak on this. We had lengthy conversations about this in committee, and this is basically a service in case it's a bigger area other than just the City of Manassia where maybe there's a big emergency situation where many municipalities need to come together. So Chief, you want to address that? I ask for unanimous consent to hear from him.
Sure. Thank you. You did a really good job explaining it. This was an agreement that we had some years ago. I think the team originally started in 2014. In 2018, they ran out of funding. The team was disbanded. Last year, they found more funding, started the team up again. So the team's been practicing and doing their training. July 1st of this year, that team will be up and ready to deploy. It's firefighters from across the state. We have six from the Needham Ashfire Rescue that are on it. I think when the original team was there, we had 15. They deploy not just in Wisconsin, but go out of state as well. The state reimburses us for our costs on it, and the agreement is just how that's handled, when they train, what level they have to train to, things like that. It was reviewed by both city attorneys, and good to go from their end.
Thank you, Chief.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
The next item is the Plan Commission Recommendations. Do we have a motion for item four? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to recommend to council the approval of the certified survey map as presented, adjusting the eastern lot line of parcel number 5-00453-00.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion is second to approve the certified survey map. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item five? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I recommend to council the approval of the certified survey map as presented, dividing 920 Plank Road parcels number 5-00378-02 into two lots.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion is second by Alderman Eisenach. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of March 15th through March 28th, 2024 in the amount of $1,904,643.51.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion is second by Alderman Hammond. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is an application for a temporary Class B retailer's license. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. I was asked to take this up. The person from the gallery that spoke this was not on our agenda as far as that was emailed, so I've only got this information literally 15 minutes ago from the website. But it looks as though everything is in order, and then I will address some of the issues that were raised that you had mentioned to me, Mayor. So I'll move at this time to approve a temporary Class B retailer's license for the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox Cities Foundation. That's hard to say because, to me, it was always University of Wisconsin Fox Valley. For 6/21/24 and 6/22/24, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. near Curtis Reed Square. This is the Milwaukee Street area, Main Street area, Taco Street area. This is to celebrate Manassia's 150th year block party.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion is second by Alderman Grady?
Yeah, maybe, Mayor, it would be better if you explained because you just gave me something in a nutshell basically 15 minutes ago, why this is being done this way, and then it would address Mrs. Taylor's issues or questions.
So this is just the application for the liquor license. There will be a separate application for the entire event. The reason we pushed for this quicker was the city cannot hold a liquor license for an event like this. It would have to be another bona fide group. Is that correct way to say it? So we did look through the UW Fox Cities Foundation to do that. They will be holding the license. They do not have liquor liability insurance. They cannot get liquor liability insurance until they have a permit to sell liquor. So it's kind of this roundabout that normally we would give the liquor license after they have the insurance, and they can't get the insurance still. We have the license. So they asked for us to do this more quickly so that they could get that insurance and make sure that they had in time for the event.
And then any of the other kind of issues will come up later to the council.
Yes. The actual event, special event application will come probably at the next meeting. Did you have a question as well, Ted?
Yes, Mayor. Thanks, Sandra, for bringing this up to the council. I knew nothing of this. Still don't know nothing of us until two minutes ago, and not appreciative of this last-minute type change or adding, which is fine, it happens. But then call us. The city office should call each individual alderman and let him know what's going on. Leave a message. So I understand it's for the party and for this and that, but this last-minute stuff is not really something I appreciate.
Sure.
So I 100% agree with you, Ted, on that. That's how I felt. Alderman Nichols brought it to my attention, and she didn't want to make the motion basically for that purpose. And so I asked the mayor, and it was posted properly. It was posted on the website, but of course, when we got our agenda early, it wasn't listed. So everything was in order. But again, I agree with you that if it's not going to be coming to us, then we need to be notified. And it may be something we bring up in protocol.
So just so everyone understands, what happens is we give the council a preview of what's going to be on the agenda Thursday night, and then we post the actual agenda on Friday. Typically, what happens if there is something different between the two of them, we'll put a note with the one that comes out on Friday to remind you or send you a second email that there's something different. I don't know if that happened or not this time, but what was posted was what's here and what's legal, and that's up on the board as well as on the website. And I do apologize for people not understanding that they didn't have the most recent copy of the agenda at that point. Austin Head is right on first.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to share with the folks watching and the folks in the room. I'm going to abstain from voting for this due to my wife's employment with the foundation, so I just wanted to explain my reasoning for my vote.
Alderman Nichols was next.
Thank you, Mayor. In the memo, you sort of addressed this already, but in the memo, it does state that the application shall include a certificate of insurance and confirmation of a licensed bartender. And we have the confirmation of a licensed bartender for the event. What's missing is the insurance, the proof of insurance, and you sort of addressed that question. My question is for the city attorney. Is that something that is stated in our ordinance that the proof of insurance shall accompany the application?
She said she'd have to look at the ordinance, but we won't give the permit, the actual license, out until we have insurance on it.
So we could amend the motion to make it contingent upon proof of insurance. Then I will make that amendment to the motion and have it be contingent upon proof of insurance.
Is there, so motion is second. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alderman Sevigny?
I just wanted to make sure, is everybody okay with the information that was just currently already? Thank you.
Motion carries 701 abstention.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance two. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to recommend to council the approval of the rezoning as presented for parcel number 5-00453-00 and parcel number 5-00457-00 from I-1 Heavy Industrial to C-1 General Commercial.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion is second by Alderman Eisenach. Any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Having driven past this area several times in the last few days at least, there are, there is presence of heavy equipment near what I'll call the little A-frame building on this property. And so obviously, somebody is using the property, and my question is, is that the kind of use that would require a special use permit?
Yeah, I believe it would be, and we will look into that and contact them and see what's going on exactly there.
And then my follow-up question is, has past practice, has it been past practice to include, to attach a special use permit with a zoning change? So in other words, would they come together to the council?
That I'm not aware of, but I can definitely look into that.
So in the event that this use of the building would need a special use permit, we can expect that to come back through the Plan Commission and to the Common Council at a later date?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item two, Resolution 11? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 1124, a resolution to approve the cancellation of outstanding checks and the write-off of general uncollectible accounts receivables and delinquent personal property tax receivables as introduced by Mayor Merkis.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion is second by Alderman Hammond. Any discussion? Did you have a discussion, Tupid?
Yes. Thank you. Director Sessman, could you just explain how this is something that's done on an annual basis at about this time of year?
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, this is a resolution that we bring forward annually. It's a three-part resolution, so as stated, it cancels any outstanding accounts payable checks that are more than a year old. It allows us to adjust our accounting records for receivables that are past the collectible period, and then it also allows us to write off receivables or personal property that were not able to be collected during that period.
And some of these things are accounted for in the budget as well?
Yes. We do have a budget amount for the write-off of personal property annually. And then the regular receivables, most of those are generally in relation to property damage, and those accounts do go to the tax refund intercept program. So should we receive a payment, you know, we will still leave those in the system with the possibility that we still might recover some of those dollars.
So the tax refund intercept program is the note about the TRIP program?
Yes.
After, on the page with personal, or I'm sorry, with property damage?
Exactly.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman Grady?
Oh, thank you. Also, Jennifer, you kind of mentioned with Alderman Nichols' question that this is something brought back every year? I don't want to have a set of precedents that because of its a year ago that we're always going to wash this stuff off.
No, this is an annual resolution, should these things be on our books, to allow us to be able to write them off after the period that they're not collectible anymore.
Okay. As long as I know that's...
Which isn't one year, it's how many years?
It's seven years for receivables. So this just, it puts a procedure in place that allows us to write them off of our books.
Okay, so then we can have some delinquent accounts out there for seven years or whatever if they're not paying that. We're not just going to write stuff off every year when we bring this up?
No, they have to have been past that seven years.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Alderman, seven.
So in some ways, I think Ted sort of asked the same question I'm about to ask, in that is that, can you explain in a little more detail the write-off portion? Does that mean, like, over that seven-year period, we write off only a certain amount because we still will try to obtain dollars?
Yeah, how it works is for the regular receivables, anything that's not personal property, that expense actually happens per the auditor's recommendation when that happens, but we can still collect during that period. So that's usually about a year or so after we bill. Personal property, the expense will happen when we actually write it off. So tonight, you know, if this is approved, then we would write the outstanding amounts off from the seven years ago. Keep in mind that personal property, a lot of times, we are able to collect from the other taxing entities, so we're just writing off the city portion of those accounts.
Okay. I won't mention the company, but there's a paper company on here, and we have been paying $500 a month for the fence. And I'm wondering, is, I mean, are we adding that to this? Because I don't think we are, and that should be an obligation that I believe should be put on that, really, individual, and not necessarily company.
Yeah, I mean, if we have exhausted our efforts to collect, the personal property is nothing that can be placed, that can go to the county, like the real estate taxes. So the personal property is our responsibility to collect or a collection agency, and if we are not successful...
So we're just talking about personal property?
Exactly. If we're not successful. This particular one, we were able to charge the other taxing entities, so it is just the city portion of that bill.
Okay. That is something that I would like for us to discuss in the future, because I raised it before about us continually paying for that fence, but, and being told that it might be taken down. But we could be liable. I don't agree, because it's not ours. So anyways, I'll leave it at that, and hopefully, staff will hear what I just said, and it's something, or the attorney, and even though she is staff, that we address that.
Alderman, Paula.
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, question for you again. So just explain this again to me. I'm a little bit unclear, so if you don't pay your bill for seven years, just as I said, he writes it off.
True?
Well, after we've exhausted any collection efforts, or if it has, sometimes it can go to the tax refund intercept program. So it just depends on what the bill is for. But like I said, we can't legally collect after the, or pursue collection after the seven years.
And if you look at the list, Randy, a lot of the companies that are on that list don't exist anymore.
That's right, yeah. I noticed there was a few individuals, but for the most part, they were companies. You're right. Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item L is appointments. I did receive a request, and I know I said there probably weren't going to be anymore, but Alderman, Grotty, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. Do I have to make a motion on the resignation?
You can make them together.
No, I'll make them separate. So let's first make the motion to accept the resignation of Rachel Dowling from the Park and Rec Board.
Second.
It's a motion and a second to accept the resignation effective immediately. I notice immediately doesn't, isn't on there? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Alderman, Grotty.
Thank you, Mayor. Not that the person for this appointment sways my thing, but we do need more people on the Park and Rec Board. I think it's been five, six months that we have been vacant since Rachel left. So I'd like to make that motion of the mayor's appointment of Melissa Grotty to the Park and Rec Board for the term of 4/1/24 to 10/1/26.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman, seven.
So I accept that you made that motion because you're on the park board. But some people might look at it thinking it's a conflict of interest, and I don't know if it is or not. But I think it's a very good choice. But I did, I did tell the, did you want to address that, or? No. I did tell the mayor that I thought he should allow for the future mayor to make any additional appointments, but I think Ted did a good job of stating that there's a need at this point. Probably won't even be able to have a meeting if we didn't do this tonight, so I'm 100% for this individual.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item N is public comments. Is there anyone with a public comment? Seeing no one, I would accept a motion to recess to committees.
Motion to adjourn?
To recess?
Or recess.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand at recess. Thank you.
The City of Minasha is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Minasha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www.minashyw.gov. Expression of opinions regarding City of Minasha issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.